Thanks.
A little humor, if I can.
A lot, I love it, I love it. There are a few technical difficulties. Thank you. I don't think, please call the role. President.
Mr. Corbin.
Present.
Mr. Flurry.
Present.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Bowman.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our military conference and our regular council meeting of February 26th. Moved by council, and seconded by councilman. Corbin, that the minutes would be approved, any discussion on the minutes. Please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Okay. Go ahead and have communications recognition of distinguished guests, awards from the council members. Any council members have any recognitions or awards they want to present today?
Certainly would like to recognize Bessie Smith and other members of the Stone Hill Action Council who are here today. Always a pleasure to see them and great to have strong neighborhood groups in the district to work with. Also, just a brief mention for the technology folks in the back, my monitor is out again. I'm flying blind.
Slide on over, I got some good ones over here that are working fine.
Come down that way.
Thank you, councilman. Is Mr. Herbert in the building? John Herbert, he's not here?
He's here.
Oh, he's here. Will you come up for a second, I want to recognize you and ask you a question. Thank you for coming. I asked the council clerk at our last meeting to ask you to come down. We had some residents who came down last week and they posed some concerns regarding some electric poles that had been placed in some parts of the city. And I wanted to see, can you respond to, I understand you spoke with those individuals?
I spoke with them before they came here, yes sir. And then I've since watched their comments on the city website, so I...
And the reason I asked you to come, because whenever I hear racial overtones, I want to address those. And they made the accusation that in some parts of the city, that the new installation of poles are not similar to the ones that's in their neighborhoods. And I actually looked at some of them and I didn't see a whole lot of distinction, but I'm asking you, can you comment on how those poles, what kind of poles, and how were they located?
First of all, that the existing line, the route of that 69,000 volt line has been there since 1954. We went back through, I've got some prepared comments, but if you want more than that...
No, I just need some overview of that.
And we followed that exact route. Because of the poles that were installed, there were, and we did not use down guys, which are when we make a corner so the poles won't pull over, we put down guys in. Well, they put in a strong foundation where we didn't have to put down guys over across the street or into somebody else's yard. So those things were eliminated during that route. And this route was installed along that and they used, you know, when I saw them, I was surprised at the size myself, but once I heard what they were built to do and withstand 100 mile an hour winds, which certainly are, the old circuit would not have, then I better understood why they did what they're doing.
And as relates to how they was placed, and as new, I guess this is new lines technology wise to move more current through the city, how would they actually, the decision of what kind of poles was to be placed in what areas, how was that determined, sir?
Well, I wasn't in that meeting to determine what type of poles would go there. I will tell you that that circuit was at times running over capacity, i.e. there was more electrons flowing through our conductors than the conductor was ready to handle. So I know in this new construction, they've increased the size of the wire and we have similar, and don't jump to the immediate conclusion it's the exact same pole, but we have similar projects that'll be ongoing over the next couple of years throughout Shreveport, Bossier.
So you could say that, in opinion of you and your company, that there was no anticipated known or intentional difference in poles that was placed wherever they was placed?
If you're suggesting was it done because it was in a low income area, no sir, that is not the case. And we have transmission poles and as they asked me in our meeting that night, "Do you have these poles in front of two-story houses?" The answer is yes, we've got these in front of very expensive houses and new subdivisions across the area. And so that's, and I don't want to be rude, but that's a ridiculous allegation to me.
And I reserve the right to talk to you again, but I'm going to ask councilwoman Leta Lynch to give any remarks.
Oh, this not?
Ladies is?
No.
Councilman.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hubbard, Mr. Jones commented during his time here with us at the council. He asked the question, "Why didn't you all run that line from the south?" There is a line already from the south and in the event the city goes down due to storms or whatever, we'll have a backup line. So I just wanted you to be sure to comment on that.
I heard that statement that we could have gone south. We do have what we call loop feeds and I won't go into any more depth on that, but there is a redundancy there. There is whatever severe weather might take place, that we can isolate that damage both on our transmission and on our distribution lines, which are those that come from the substations to homes in order to restore power more quickly. And in the most severely impacted areas, sometimes that little section in the middle of that, we've got to get that completely rebuilt before we can get that last section up and energized so we can serve those remaining customers.
Thank you, Mr. Hubbard. Any other? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Hubbard, you and I have talked a number of times.
Yes.
About this situation and a few others. Would you make a couple of brief comments just about what AEP SWP Co. plans as they move in the future to upgrade these transmission lines and substations, what they're going to do in the neighborhoods?
Yeah, thank you, and if I may, so I might make sure I get all my talking points to you so that you hear them all and I don't leave some out. And these are fairly brief, but I do appreciate the opportunity to address this. When we heard it, we were very concerned about the tone and the statements that were made. On this project, we're replacing poles and wires on the three miles of 69,000 volt line from Elbe Road Substation to the south Shreveport. Transmission line has been there since 1954, as I mentioned. On February 16th, I met with two of my colleagues at the A.B. Palmer Park and we heard the concerns and tried to address a lot of the conversation that they brought forward. Residents suggested that the big lines don't go through wealthy neighborhoods. That's not the case. In fact, they do. While most, if not all, of those who attended the meeting are not directly impacted by the construction, we understand that they have concerns about electrical work going on in their neighborhoods. We realize that the larger community would have greatly appreciated being notified about the project. As we do consistently, we contacted only those by mail living adjacent to the transmission line. Our agents then talked to the impacted property owners to gain their approval if their property was impacted immediately. Our contractor, Ellie Myers, also provided last October information to all the residents along the line, those property owners, the project timeline. So we were communicating along the way. In the last several years, SWP Co., or in the next several years, excuse me, we will invest more than $30 million to rebuild infrastructure that brings to the city of Shreveport, Bossier reliable electric service through these transmission projects and to provide reliable electric service and to support the area's economic growth. On future transmission projects, and this I think is where Mike was coming from, we intend to do more public outreach and make sure we're providing neighborhoods with information about why we need to do the work, project details, and much more about the types of poles in the construction schedule. We're rebuilding this line at the same voltage and replacing wooden poles that've been there nearly 60 years with sturdier steel poles that'll withstand the 100 mile an hour wind that I mentioned. Another question raised in the meeting at A.B. Palmer Park was their fear of the unknown health issue. The health and safety around transmission lines have been studied extensively. Our employees work around those lines every day. There is no evidence these lines are unsafe. We used existing right of ways from the city property that we're allowed to use per our franchise agreement with the city. Our rebuild is very near completion. Let me restate that future transmission projects across Shreveport, Bossier, we intend to do public outreach as outlined above. We also improve, we will also improve our communication with city council and the mayor. Thank you, and that's my prepared comments and I can answer whatever other questions you might have.
I think you've been pretty cooperative in answering questions that was concerning us and I think we have enough information to revisit with our residents. Are there any other questions for Mr. Hubbard, councilwoman?
I wasn't really going to say anything, but let me make sure I'm hearing what you're saying, Mr. Hubbard. Because I don't, I wasn't here to hear, I got a call from Attorney Jones about this situation, okay? And Percy is a very smart guy.
Mm-hmm.
Very knowledgeable person, a person that cares about his community. And so I don't want to, you know, give the impression that he's kind of being crucified here after the fact. And I don't know if he's here today, I haven't seen him. But I want to make sure that the concerns that were raised by the residents aren't dismissed, okay?
No, ma'am, they weren't.
Even though, I didn't say you were, I want to make sure that you all heard what they said and what their concerns were and that, that just because people may perceive something as having some social disparities or racial disparities or economic disparities that were raised in addition to what their concerns were, because there are actual real disparities that exist in this community.
Yes, ma'am.
That are well documented. And, but I'm not saying that this is one of those instances, I heard you say that it was one of those instances. But what I did hear you say was that you all are going to do more.
Yes, ma'am.
Going forward to keep more of the community informed on what, you know, what your plans are. There'll be greater public outreach and communication, not just basically what's required of what, you know, the smaller group that you all have, that you all reached out to in this instance.
Yes.
But do a greater public outreach.
Yes, ma'am.
To the community. And so I appreciate you all listening and attempting to understand what their concerns were and addressing them, even though, you know, they didn't get that information initially, but they have it now and I appreciate that you all took that extra step to make sure that, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hubbard. Thank you. Any other councilman? No, thank you. Are there any other councilmen have any recognitions, awards they would like to recognize this time? Councilwoman Leta Lynch.
Okay, one, I wanted to congratulate all of the winners during the primary elections on last Tuesday, whether, you know, whoever the Democrats and Republicans. I want to give a special congratulations to my childhood friend Judge Shonda Stone, who was elected to the appellate court. I also want to say congratulations to Commissioner Ken Epperson, who was elected third vice president of the Police Jury Association of Louisiana on this past week. Ms. Sandra Ratliff, I believe we recognized her a couple of weeks ago, but she had to leave and she was not here to hear a proclamation read, but she's here today and I'm just going to ask that we read it, or if you'd be so kind, to read her resolution and if you have any comments, Ms. Ratliff.
A resolution to recognize Sandra K. Ratliff Lee as she celebrates her retirement from Caddo Public Schools and for her service and dedication to the community and to otherwise provide with respect there too, by Councilwoman Stephanie Lynch. Whereas Sandra K. Ratliff Lee was employed by the Caddo Public Schools in 1988, where she held various positions such as library and office clerk, homeless shelter tutor, food service tech one, computer lab manager and substitute classroom instructor. And whereas on December the 15th, 2015, she retired from Midway Mustang Academy, formerly Midway Elementary School, where she served as security coordinator since 2005. Whereas Ms. Lee will celebrate her retirement on February the 23rd, 2016 in the gymnasium at Midway Mustang Academy. Whereas Ms. Lee continues to work with children as a part-time instructor too for the Shreveport Parks and Recreation and where she monitors and assists children and the elderly and find positive courteous and professional matters. She also works part-time as an after-school instructor for Greater Friendship Academy where she supervises students. And whereas Ms. Lee has received numerous professional awards and recognitions such as the Harry Blake Education Award, the African-American Make a Difference Achievement Award, the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Humanitarian and Leadership Award, and the Virginia K. Sheehy Most Influential Woman Award. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Shreveport in new regular and legal session convened, that the city recognizes Ms. Lee for over 27 years of dedicated and valuable service to Caddo Public Schools and to the community.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Clerk, and like the councilwoman said earlier, this resolution has been adopted and we want to congratulate you, Ms. Ratliff, on your outstanding work on the community. Councilwoman Leta Lynch is going to present you with the...
Yes, I'm waiting on one other councilperson's signature, he's in the back and we'll get that and get it to you.
Okay.
But if you'd be so kind, give us some praise.
To the Honorable Mayor Tyler, to City Councilman Mr. Bradford and other members of the board, and to Councilwoman Lynch, I stand here today to thank you for the many accolades that you have bestowed upon me upon my retirement from Caddo Parish Public Schools under the direction of Dr. Lamar Goris serving as superintendent. I'm humbly grateful for the support, the donations, the emails, the community support and collaboration that was rendered during my tenure. Many times when we reach out to councilpersons other than those that are in my district, sometimes there's a hesitation, but I cannot say that for all of you that are sitting before me. When I called you, you came. You supported the children, the parents, the senior citizens in the community by attending programs, engaging in community projects and donations that may or may not have impacted your district. I would be remiss if I did not extend my congratulations and my gratitude to the mayor's office and to Councilwoman Lynch for the collaborated effort for today's proclamation. I thank you so very much for what you have done. I realize we live in a fast-paced society and for you to take the time out to say thank you speaks volumes to me that everybody in Shreveport is important. As I close, it has been my honor and privilege to serve the city of Shreveport and I will continue to do so in the days to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on, Mayor, council chair. Council chair.
Better wait till Will gets it.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lynch, and thank you, Ms. Ratliff, for your honor today. We really appreciate your work over the years in Shreveport as well as in the Caddo Parish as it relates to young people and students. Are there any other recognitions from the council members? And America Communications, recognition, awards from the communication?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the council. Last week, the commission, Women's Commission kicked off National Women's History Month with a week-long slate of events. I want to thank everyone who participated in those events. The city of Shreveport is providing sandbags to residents and businesses that anticipate flooding near their properties. Sandbags may be picked up at the Streets and Drainage Yard, 3825 Mansfield Road. The city began issuing sandbags at 8:00 a.m. today, 25 per individual. This operation will extend as needed each day throughout the week between 8:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. So we know that there is a forecast that flooding may occur within our city over the next several days. So we want everybody to know that you can go by and get sandbags. We continue to serve our citizens with numerous events. Since we met the last month, the last time, the city has supported several events including Black History programs at several SPAR community centers last month. SPAR seniors hosted a Taste of SPAR at Bill Cockroft Community Center. Last Saturday, Family Fun Event in the Red River District, Shreveport Symphony, the Broadway Tenor's and Dr. Seuss, The Snitches at Riverview Theater, Alive After Five in the Red River District featuring the band The Good News. I'm suffering today with a little cold, so I hope you'll forgive the voice today. Some other events, Sparring Event at Bill Berry Community Center, Beanbag Baseball at Southern Hills Community Center, and the list goes on and on. Also today, we'd like to recognize two Shreveport schools that were finalists in the Math Counts Competition, which was sponsored by the Louisiana Engineering Society, the Shreveport Chapter, and held in our city last month. Many of our city engineers are members of LES and work closely with the students in the competition. Matthew Redman, a civil engineer four, was the coordinator. Is Mr. Redman here today? Please stand when I call your name. Thank you, Mr. Redman. Also, he organized the event. Assistant city engineers Patrick Furlong and Andy Glasgow both volunteered the Saturday of the competition to grade the test. Will you all stand ourselves? Thank you so much. These are engineers who worked actually for the city of Shreveport and they work very closely to help these young people in this Math Counts Competition. Thank you so much for what you do. Today, I want to present proclamations to the teams from Caddo Mill Magnet and Southfield School. Mill Magnet placed first and Southfield came in second. Both teams are advancing to the state competition and I want these young people to know that we're so proud, so very proud of you. We want to also recognize them, I'll come down and present the proclamation in just a minute. Mr. Keith Burton is here, I noticed, from the school system and he is a chief academic officer. Will you stand, Mr. Burton, so people can see you? Thank you. Mrs. Lisa Edwards is our director for these schools and of course, our public relations assistant, Ms. Mary Woods. Will you please stand from the Caddo Parish school system? And I want to thank the coaches from each of these schools. Mrs. Anhee Choi and her assistant, Mrs. Pomeroy from Mill Magnet. Will you please stand? And we're going to ask you to come up because I'm going to come down and present proclamations for you and your students in just a moment. I just learned today that one of the students helped to tutor these young people. He was shadowing me this afternoon and I want him to stand. Sunjay Lechman, will you please stand? Where are you, Sunjay? Thank you so much. He helped tutor these young people with the Math Counts Competition. Now, we also have from Southfield, Mrs. Holly Berry, who is a coach for the Southfield students. Mrs. Berry, where are you? Will you please stand? Okay, at this time, we're going to come down and read the proclamations and present those to you. Principal from Mill Magnet. Okay, we're going to read the proclamations, councilmembers, and then we'll present those to these schools and then we will take comments from you, the councilmembers, and comments from the coaches or the principal. Okay, the first one, and of course, the proclamations are the same, but we'll say first place for Caddo Mill Magnet and we'll say second place for Southfield. The proclamation reads, "Whereas the Math Counts Competition Series is a national program that provides students the opportunity to compete in live math contests against and alongside their peers. And whereas it is the longest-running Math Counts Program and is open to all sixth, seventh and eighth grade students. And whereas over 500 chapter competitions take place in all 50 states as well as United States territories and schools worldwide throughout, through the United States Department of Defense and State Department. And whereas Math Counts was founded in 1983 as a way to provide new avenues of engagement in math for middle school students. And whereas Math Counts began solely as a competition, it has grown to include three unique but complementary programs, the Math Counts Competition Series, the National Math Club, and the Math Video Challenge. And whereas the Louisiana Engineering Society sponsors and organizes the Math Counts Competition for the state of Louisiana. Now therefore, I, Ollie S. Tyler, Mayor of the city of Shreveport, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, March 2008, 2016 as Math Counts Recognition Day in the city of Shreveport and urge all citizens to recognize and congratulate first-place winning team from Caddo Mill Magnet and second-place winning team from Southfield School. In witness whereof, I have here unto set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Shreveport to be affixed. And I want to say congratulations to these young people, they're going to the... They're going to the state to compete and from there, we hope that we'll have some to go on to national. Congratulations." These are the brains, young people. All right, if you all will stand right there and then we're going to let you go around and shake the hands of our council members. How about that? All right.
Mike, make it better stand up to at least make it clear.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would you like, would you mind if the coaches would come up and say something? They may want one of the students to represent from each of the schools.
Certainly, Mayor. Please, coaches, will you come up, please?
Coaches, you may want to have one of your students. I don't know. I mean, I'm sure that they're not shy. Okay, would you like to have, would you like to talk just for a minute about what this competition means, what it meant?
All right. The big guys, how y'all doing?
Hello. We'd like to thank the mayor and the council members and we hope to represent Cattle Parish well at state.
Great, thank you.
I guess I'd like to thank everybody that's supporting us and I hope that we do well in state.
You will do well.
You will.
Just again, thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, those are the end of the announcements and recognitions.
Thank you, Mayor, and let me, to the young people and those who sponsor them, teachers, the coaches, and the school board personnel, Mayor, thank you for not allowing this moment to pass. Competition is good and whenever we see this type of representation from Cattle Parish, it makes us all proud. It's an effort that we're going to be remembering for much to come and years to come as they move forward and I wish them well in their future competition. And I know that you guys are going to compete well and make us proud back here in Shreveport and Cattle Parish. So thank you again for this recognition and then just send them off to the state with all of our honors and congrats. So thank you again.
If I could say one thing, Councilman Jenkins actually asked that my office would do proclamations. Somebody emailed him, but I actually attended the Engineering Society banquet where they, where we talked about this competition. And then the week after that, he asked if we would do something from the mayor's office and I said I'd love to do proclamations. We love working with young people to make sure that they understand that they have, they're our future. And so I did want to say that publicly and I want to say thank you to Councilman Jenkins.
Well, thanks. Some of that credit goes to Ken Craft out there. I see him out there, so he certainly deserves some recognition, but appreciate it and obviously it's a worthwhile event for us, so appreciate you supporting him.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, for making the mayor aware of such great competition and honors for our students. Councilwoman Lynch.
I wanted to say, since they're so smart at math, y'all come back at budget time. And while you're at the state, help them out too. Congratulations again.
Okay, any other comments? Councilman, let council members, I need you to indulge me for a second. I just got a text. I have a family situation that I may have to leave in a few minutes to go to, so I'm going to ask that we suspend the rules at this time and hear public comments regarding Resolution Number 10 and then take up Resolution Number 10, that we may vote on that. Proud to me having to leave. I would like to participate in that debate and in that vote. So I would move that we suspend the rules at this time to do that. Move by the chair, second by Councilman Jenkins, that we suspend the rules, hear public comments regarding Resolution 10, and then take up Resolution 10. You heard the motion? Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passed at seven to zero. I have, this is where we're going to do this. I have several, at least 15 to 16 requests to speak. This resolution has been on our agenda for six days and in those meetings, we have had input from the public regarding these. Our first initial postponement was because we wanted the public as well ourselves to be engaged with the public hearings that was put forward by NLCOG and DOTD. We was there, most of us was there. We gathered information. Our second postponement was due to the fact that there were some concerns about the residents not being afforded additional information as well as the council members. Mr. Ken Rogers, as well as others, has submitted and made us aware of sites and information that was available to us to make a very concrete and intelligent decision regarding this project. So now we're here to bring this to a vote and to closure as your city council. Fifteen to sixteen requests to speak is a lot, given three minutes each, but that's what the law requires and we will accommodate that, but I'm going to ask you, ladies and gentlemen, if you hear someone say something that you want to say, then respectfully say, "I agree with him" and we can avoid extending this debate and move forward with the vote. But before I call the first request to speak person, just for the knowledge of the council, all those that came here to speak in the support of the intercity connector, just raise your hand and stand, please. Okay, all right. All right, thank you very much. All those who came here to speak in opposition to the intercity connector, will you please stand or raise your hand, please? It appears that the people who are here are here to speak in support, so certainly, ladies and gentlemen, I would trust that you will just concur and give your support to those that will speak. I will, by law, unless you request not to be called, I will start calling those names and if you are in support of the comment regarding your official speaker, then you may, you know, just stand or pass with your name, probably. So, sorry? Okay, well, I'll receive that. The first, Mr. Patrick Harrison, will you come forward to give you a name and address for the record and you have three minutes, sir?
Thank you, Chairman Bradford. My name is Patrick Harrison. I am a business owner of a local manufacturing company in North Shreveport and a resident of Cattle Parish, northern Cattle Parish, and I strongly support the completion of I-49 through the most direct route through the city of Shreveport. Shreveport is a unique city that is blessed to have our current interstate infrastructure that includes I-20, I-49, and potentially I-69. Shreveport cannot compare itself to other cities that have rebuilt interstate connectors or interstates through their, or rebuilt interstates through their communities because each one of those are unique problems and unique scenarios to those cities and none of which have correlations to what is actually the case here locally. The truth is, we have a major hole and gap in our existing interstate I-49 system in which is problematic not only to our own citizens, but is also to the millions of people that travel and move commerce through our community. We must simply finish I-49 with the closest, most convenient route. As a member of Committee 100, Manufacturers' Managers Council, Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, North Louisiana Economic Partnership, North Shreveport Business Association, I know that these organizations have all submitted the completion of I-49, submitted formal resolutions of I-49 through the city of Shreveport. In fact, all have passed these resolutions unanimously with their boards. And at this time, I wanted to illustrate to you the actual resolutions that we have support to help give you the confidence you need to pass the resolution that you're considering today. These resolutions are from the Committee 100, Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce, the Bossier Chamber of Commerce, the African American Chamber of Commerce, North Shreveport Business Association, North Louisiana Economic Partnership, Manufacturers' Managers Council, Biomed Research Foundation, and the Louisiana Motor Transport Association. And these are all resolutions that have passed for their own unique reasons why I-49, completion of I-49 through the city of Shreveport, would benefit these organizations. There is huge widespread support among the businesses in our area to finally complete this interstate project. We have been talking about it for years. I have personally spoken to many business owners, managers, and businesses, organizations, and found absolutely no one who supports Alternative 5, which is the Loopit Route around the city. I truly believe that Alternative 5 will be and was intended to be a no-build due to the enormous cost and environmental issues associated with that route. Every businessperson that I have spoken to fully supports completing the project through the city and not around the city. It is imperative that our city council show support for the completion of this project. The citizens of Shreveport look to you as our leaders and depend on you to make good solid decisions for the betterment of our community as a whole. Some people and even the media like to say that there is a great divide over this issue within our community on this project. That is simply not true. The reality is, there are few people that are opposed to this project going through Allendale and so many widespread supporters for it. This was clearly demonstrated recently at the public meetings and the hearings that they had back in January that NLCOG held. With all that said, I ask that you please support the completion of I-49 through the most direct route through our city and thank you for allowing me the time to speak to you today on this matter.
Thank you, sir. And let me, let me say, and I failed to say that, you have a seat, Mr. Mayor. This vote, opposition that we take in this vote is symbolic. Give it to the clerk, please, Mr. Harrison. We initially was going to make our, make our position known prior to February night, which was before the deadline of public comments and commentary regarding consideration from, from those that would review those. We didn't, we did not get in front of that, postponement it, so that our position as a city council would not have influence on anybody as it relates to that. Our, our vote today would merely be that the leadership of the city, the city council, will be taking a position as it relates to what we feel is of the best interest of the city. So, so don't misunderstand that we have no influence. We have no power to influence the process one way or the other. We're just, we're just going to make a vote so that we will, citizens will know what our intent is as it relates to this, this change. So, so any, any direct comments regarding what we have, what we have to do, what our powers or authorities to do related to this, there is none. This is not a project designed for the city's input or, you know, power to, to give any, any type of, any type of input as it relates to authority figures. So I just wanted to say that. Our next speaker would be Vernon Chance. Please come forward. And like I said earlier, if you feel compelled to, you know, abstain from speaking, you have that right.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. I'm Vernon Chance. I'm a resident of Shreveport, retired plant manager of UOP Honeywell, and past president and current executive director of the Committee 100 of Shreveport and Bossier.
Your first, your, your home address, Mr. Mayor?
Home address is 430 Lloyd Lane. So I would hope that the city council will take a position in favor of the intercity corridor by voting for the resolution for the intercity connector. This will demonstrate unified support to the officials making the final routing decision indicating that our city wants this connector completed. The selected route should be the one that is most feasible, most cost-effective, and is most environmentally sound for the city. Secondly, there is a process supported by law with regulations that define the selection process. Also, there are well-defined relocation processes for those who are displaced by interstate highways, as well as their design standards that minimize adverse effects on people nearby and these will be followed. These processes are being followed by DOTD and NLCOG as they plan and implement this I-49 project. My third point is that the alternate or alternative called Loopit is not feasible due to being longer, more costly, and would not be environmentally acceptable. This alternative would adversely affect the city water supply and recreation on Cross Lake and it would be, it would not be acceptable to have, to redesign and rebuild the bridge over Cross Lake along with replacing other interchanges within the Loopit alternative route in order to accommodate the higher I-49 traffic volume. I might add that these are my comments, but they also reflect the feelings of our Committee 100 and so many people outside the Committee 100 that I have talked with about this issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
And I may add, let me try to accommodate your situation too on time. I know there's some other members of the Committee 100 here that have signed up to speak and, and most of them have whispered to me that they are satisfied with what I have to say, but you might ask if any others would like to say something.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that observation. I'm going to step out to chambers for just a second and the vice chair is going to proceed with the speakers.
The chair recognizes Dr. Philip Roseman at this time. Dr. Roseman, would you come forth and state your name and address, please? And you have three minutes to speak, sir.
Thank you. I'm Philip Roseman, 510 Longleaf Road, Shreveport, Louisiana. I'm here representing the Greater Shreveport Chamber of Commerce as the chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. Just quickly, I thank you, I think that this is very important in terms of speaking to our council, our representative leadership in this community. I think why everybody believes this is such an important issue is that this has been something that people have been working on for years and years and years. I will say that I think a completed I-49 completely through, and I think this is reasonable, would be among the top four or so government infrastructure projects that are important to this community over the last five decades and the next two or three decades. And those are I-20, Barksdale, the medical school, and this. So I think it becomes very, very important that we. So, I think it becomes very, very important that we symbolically or in whatever way show our, our togetherness about leadership, about what we want to do with this, with I-49. It is a great opportunity, and we certainly shouldn't blow this great opportunity. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Chair now recognizes Louis Brosset. Please come forward and state your name and address, and give us three minutes, please.
Good evening. My name is Louis Brosset. I live at 1524 Clay Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71101. I come this morning, this afternoon, to, to speak to you guys about, and ladies, about the I-49 and how you're going with it, and how you, you're going to vote for it. You've already said it in, in many occasions that I've visited here, and it seems that you've already had your mind made up, even before the, the evidence even came out from, from what they discovered, or what they didn't discover. I say to you, my friends, in, in, in order to make any proper decision, you should have all the information before making a vote. Now, you have it as, as you wish, but I'm, I'm saying to you, as, as, as a, as a constituent, as you call us, we, we need to hear from you, you guys, which my fellow man has stepped out. But I, I say to you that, that the information that, that NLCOG has gotten from all of the meetings that they had way back in 2011, 2012, I want to tell you that it's nothing that, 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 that all of these people have put on there that they came back with to, to give us anything. It's not the proper information. Say it as you may, but we know how we voted, and it didn't come back as that. They even went so far as to, to use the Loopit for their own gain to, to, to use our name as Loopit, as we want them to go 31, 32 to 220, and back to the connector, which is that back at North Market. So, I say to you, please be careful as you vote. This is, this is, this is nothing to play with. It's not just an Allendale thing. I want you to know that. This is a Shreveport thing, and I dare you want to, want to, to satisfy people that are coming from north, way north, to come through our, our, our area for, for, for their convenience. Two and a half miles to three miles. What are you saying? Tear down the neighborhood. That's crazy. If you can't see it, I know God sees it, and I'm just going to depend on him. And Mayor Tyler, I come to you. I want to thank you for not making a, a, a public announcement of, of how you're voting. I appreciate that. At least you gave me some hope. I thank you. Now, back to the council. I still have 33 minutes. Might want to sing your song. You just might just never know. But I want to say to you again, please be careful as you vote, folk. It's, 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 it's not, it's not just an Allendale thing. Please remember that. I want this to stick in your head. It is not an Allendale thing. It's a Shreveport thing. Everything that's going to happen between you voting on that, that position, a resolution, means the life to a lot of people. God bless you, and may God be with you.
Mr. Brosset, has anyone came to you or spoke to you, any representative of NLCOG and, or from the council, from the city, anyone came and spoke to you guys about anything? Like what you may or may not be compensated for, or talking about your homes or anything?
No, they have not, but, but they could not possibly pay us enough for our homes. Our homes may be the tiniest little homes. They may even be the, they may be in the tiniest little neighborhood, and we may not have a pot to piss in, a window to throw it out of. But I want to say to you, my brother, that, that those homes were built from people that came from around the world. Those homes were built from love. Nothing a builder could put in, into a home like that. Nothing. I thank you guys again, and as I said, God be with you.
Thank you, Mr. Brosset. Let me, let me say, and I, I just briefly heard you ask him, was anybody in communication with anybody from the Fuller Center Homes? I was, and-
With the residents? Not that, I'm just, all the residents of Allendale? I just want to know, did anybody go and talk to them, did anyone speak to them as far as what may or may not happen to some of the people who didn't, do not understand exactly what this means or may not mean to them or for them?
Well, and we can further in, in our debate, but I'm going to say that is, is Robert Mills here? Robert Mills is here. Robert Mills and I met with Lee Jeter, who's the director of the Fuller Center Homes, on three occasions, Mr. Mills. And we, we discussed in detail what was available if this happens, and it was, and this was months ago, this, in, in, in its latest, in January, and we discussed just, just a worst-case scenario situation, and, and I thought Mr. Jeter was relaying what we did, was discussing back to the residents of the Fuller Center Homes. That was my understanding. Was that your understanding?
Yes, sir. It was according to six public hearings. He's going to have to get on the mic if he has to.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to say that there was communications with the director of the Fuller Center, the housing director, and, and, and we engaged in that conversation. So, we'll move forward. Thank you, Mr. Mills.
They didn't want to talk to the residents, specifically the residents, the people, the citizens.
If we talked to the director, I was thinking that, that, that the residents would be, would be communicated to from, from the director. That's, that's, that's the chain of command, the protocol that we usually engage with. But nevertheless, we can further discuss that in our debate. But anyway, where do we start at? Mr. Ham, Robert Ham?
Sir, I agree with the other gentleman, and I will, I will quit.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you very much. Jack Sharp?
I approve of the question.
Thank you very much, sir. Mr. Mills, Robert Mills?
I endorse the second of Mr. Harrison.
Thank you very much. John Pete?
I as well defer my time to Mr. Chance. Harrison, I agree with you.
Thank you very much, sir. Ben Walker?
I do agree with Mr. Chance.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Dick Bremer?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, mayor, the Chamber of Commerce. I'm Dick Bremer. I'm the president of the Chamber of Commerce, 400 Edward Street. The chamber believes that this inner-city connector is a very important project for our community. We previously furnished to you a, a package that included the resolution that was passed by our, our board of directors, and while we appreciate that, that you are not the decision-making body with respect to this project, we do believe that an expression from you in support of the project would be very beneficial. It would send a very positive signal to our state capitol as well as the federal authorities with respect to this project. And as you know, when we work together in our community and we're united, our chances for success on a project are greatly improved. And we saw that recently with, with respect to the hotel motel tax that passed, and it's because we were working together, everybody was focused on passing it, and with the leadership of the mayor, working with Mayor Walker, holding a lot of meetings both sides of the river, we had great success. And we would hope that our community would embrace this project and have that success also. One other comment. Dr. Sean Wilson is the new secretary of the Department of, of the Department of Transportation in the state of Louisiana, and he was in our community a few weeks ago, and several of us met with him. In fact, he gave us over two and a half hours of his time. Two things he mentioned. One, he was very complimentary of northwest Louisiana. He indicated that we develop a plan, we work the plan, and as a result, we follow the process. He was, and he stressed the, the importance of following the process. And the, the second thing he shared with us is that at the state level, his department has sufficient state funds to use all of the federal money that's going to be available to the state of Louisiana. Most recently, the federal government passed a new five-year transportation bill, highway bill, and we're going to be able to take advantage of those dollars, and as you know, many of these projects, 80% is paid by the federal authorities, 20% by the state authorities. So, we, we would, we would encourage you to, to, to look hard at this project and, and support it. We believe it would be very beneficial to our community. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you coming. Sir Robert Johnston?
I live 10248 Cardiff Drive in Keithville, Louisiana. I've been a resident of Caddo Parish, Shreveport, most of my life. I'm about 70 years. I wanted to address what one of the previous speakers said. This is a Shreveport thing, and if we don't do this, like several have said, we need to be together on this and go right through the logical route, right through inner-city Allendale. And to say we're divided on this, there's very few I see that are against the inner-city route, so we're not divided. I think the majority of people want that route through, right through the inner city. It's the most logical, it's the most cost-effective, and that's the way we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you coming. David, come with.
I concur under Mark's, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. John Glassell?
Hello. I'm John Glassell. I'm a resident of Veltre, Louisiana, in North Caddo Parish, and I'm in favor of the inner-city route because this will give us direct access for all of North Caddo to southeast Shreveport, where most of all, the doctor's offices, healthcare, retail, businesses, and our jobs are. And it would cut 15, 20 minutes off travel time. We would not have to go through all the red lights on North Market in downtown to get from here to there. Also, I-49 has opened already in North Caddo Parish, and that has relieved the traffic problems on Highway 71 North to, to make that highway a lot safer highway for local traffic to use. When I-49 is connected through the city, it will also help North Market relieve its traffic problem for local traffic to use that. And when I-49 opens to 220 in about two years from now, when they're coming south, they will not drive over Cross Lake Bridge around the west side, around the airport, and on Terry Bradshaw's passway to get to I-49 South. They're going to get off at Blanchard Road, which is Hillary Huckabee, go east towards where it becomes Ford Street, and come down that little two and a half-lane street and turn on Allen Avenue to get to I-49 South at I-20. And with those red lights there and increased traffic, it will be Bedlam. And, and this will actually happen for the period of years it takes to get the funding, acquisition, design, bidding, and construction of the ICC will really show the need for this inner-city connector. Thanks.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for coming down. Ms. Linda Baneki?
Chairman, I am calling the chairman of the committee.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you. Mr. Chris Kinsey?
Chairman, I concur with Mr. Harrison.
Thank you, sir. Duke DeWey?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Duke DeWey, and I concur with the chairman of the committee.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you for coming down. Gus Tony?
Mr. Chairman, I'm Gus Tony. I'm with the chairman of the committee. I approve of the question. I have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question. I want to know if you have a question.
year, and I was assured by Bobby Jindal, representative, that the money was already there for this project. And this was, Mary Tyler, was it, was it 11 or 12 when we were running?
14.
14, whatever it was. Okay. Then, 14, the money was there. One thing I wanted to remind everyone that has not come up, most of you know, my father came to Louisiana in 1955 to construct the largest city water system that we have. My father built the City of Shreveport's water system, 1955, to be used until 1975, and we're still on that line, which is 60-something-plus years. The one thing I want to bring up is, number one, looping it, it's been discussed, is a lot more money, we don't want to do that, but also, it has hazardous waste trucks driving over our only water system over Cross Lake. Should one wreck, you know, we could be very similar to a Flint, Michigan, or worse. And that's, if, for no other reason, and on top of that, the two, I think it was $240,000 that we spent for Providence to do the study back in 2013, $650 million economic development into infinity for our city by logistics firms coming in, because we would then have northwest highways, our waterways, our ports, our two airports, and our railway system. We would have everything for those logistics companies to come in with many, many jobs, and also to take their inventory, they would take our buildings that are just sitting there, being destroyed, and using, use them for inventory storage. So that's all I wanted to add to it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your comments. That is the conclusion of our public commentary. A lot of commentary has been afforded us in this particular resolution. I would like to make a motion that Resolution Number 10 will be approved and adopted.
Second?
It's been moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Fleury, that we will adopt Resolution Number 10. If there are any other discussion, please vote.
Mr. Bowman and Mr.?
Oh, Mr. Bowman, I've seen.
He's getting a request to speak.
Well, he's on the key to speak.
Mr. Bowman.
I just wanted to go on the record to say first that I'm not opposing, I'm not against I-49, I had some emails and some phone calls about 49, I'm not against it, I'm against the way that it went about as far as the citizens are concerned. I think that we should have went and said something to the citizens themselves that lived in the community, instead of just going to one person to relay the message. That was my, that's my intent, and that was that, I just wanted to go on the record and say I'm not against it, but I had, that's how I felt about it. Thank you.
Hold the, hold the, hold the string, Counsel later.
I wanted to, to say that while I realize a resolution does not have the force of law in terms of the legality, I don't want anybody to really assume that my vote is quote-unquote symbolic only. I take any vote that I make very seriously, and I hope that it is an indication of how I feel about a certain matter. And in this case, my vote today represents that I believe that this is the best route for this city. And so, I don't want it to be symbolic, I want it to be real, and a real indication of my support for this project. Thank you.
And I appreciate that, and I think we all concur with that sentiment, that we're doing what we're doing because we feel that this is the best interest of the city.
And let me, let me finish. Yeah, because it made me think of something. We were in DC back in January, and I don't know, I didn't really feel good, I don't know how it made you feel, Mayor, for us to have to sit in that ballroom and listen to Governor Edwards talk about transportation projects that the state was looking at, and they were all I-10 and below. And, I mean, I lost my appetite, I was so upset that when he finished, I made a beeline to him, and, you know, made some comments about it. And one of the things that he, I mean, he said, the first thing he said to me was that he's been getting calls, you know, mixed signals from this area in terms of our commitment to this project. And so, you know, I'm hearing people say this is about Shreveport, I don't want to be dismissive of the concerns that Mr. Brissette and Ms. Wiley and others have expressed, because at the end of the day, if someone told you that, you know, your home was going to be bulldozed, you know, that naturally, even if it's for progress, would cause, you know, some anxiety on the part, on your part. And so, I don't want to be dismissive of their concerns, but at the same time, I'm hoping, as Councilman Bowman has expressed, even beyond this vote, even beyond whatever decision NLCOG makes or that the state makes, that we will move forward as a community, that we will, you know, not let this be the end of our conversation with that community, and with those people who are going to be directly affected, and to, you know, put our arms around them, and help them through this process, because it is a challenge. I mean, I would feel the same way if it was coming through Hollywood Heights where I live. I would probably be as upset, even if I agreed it was for progress. And so, so it is a real commitment, I think, that we're making, and sending a unified message to the governor and to the Secretary of Transportation for the state, that we are looking out for the best interests of our city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very kindly for those remarks, and I think we can all be in agreement that we're sensitive. This is my district, and I'm sensitive to all of my residents. And I need to say that I've met with a lot of people, I met with this group, I met with this group because they're part of my district. I've heard their concerns. I've also met with other groups. Allendale is larger than, between North Allen and Pier from Ford to Patchment. Allendale is inclusive, and the majority of my district, the residents of my district is in support of the inner-city connector. Yet, they don't live in the possible pathway, but in weighing all the elements and within the equation of this project and what it would mean for the city, I have no other position to take, other than let's do what's best interest of the city, as the councilman of that, of that district. I've met with the people within the MLK area who's affected by that extension up to, up to MLK and over to I-220. I found that there was no real adverse effects. Matter of fact, most of them benefited who's displaced because of that project. So I feel comfortable in the position that I'm taking. And again, it's not symbolic in the sense that we don't have any influence, it's symbolic in the sense that we're sending a message to our community, to our city, that we don't want to stay small. We keep doing small things, we're going to stay little. We got to grow, and this is a best opportunity to grow at this stage. In addition to that, we're talking about, and I'm not talking about after the fact, I'm talking about during the process, if this is approved by the state, it would influx new money in the Shreveport. Opportunities where we could engage new contractors, new businesses, to participate in project, in a project that could make this city healthier. African-American businesses getting dismal work, this will help them, bring an opportunity to do work on a project that will, by any estimation, would bring in at least $800 million of construction work and procurements. It don't come alone that often, y'all. We're going to ensure, by all the power that we have, that the residents who are affected will be made right. It wasn't our council responsibility to go out and engage any residents. NLCOG held several meetings over years, that everybody had an opportunity to do input. It wasn't a city project. This council, this administration was, had no obligation to supplement, or sub, 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 to convent the process that NLCOG had set forward to engage citizens on something that was not really in our preview. So again, I thank you all for your commentary, and I thank the council for their understanding as we postpone and postpone to gather information, gather information. Now we are positioned at a point where I think we can intelligently and without relegation express our position on this project. Again, I'm calling for the vote. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think the elephant in the room is that I have not said anything, but I want our citizens to know that I sit on the NLCOG Board as one of the Board of Directors, and I too, over the past year, have been gathering information so that I can make the best decision for our city, and I'm going to be doing that as a member of the NLCOG Board of Directors. And, you know, we're going to be making that recommendation to our State Department of Transportation, and that's going to be sometime soon. I'm pretty sure that there will be opportunity for, you know, us to sit with citizens, if the recommendation is for it to come down through the city, because I too want to make sure that people have the opportunity to, you know, be able to have homes and that kind of thing. But, because this is a new process for me, I've not been involved, I needed to, I needed to gather all the information. I need to make sure that I had, you know, all the information, and I needed to be able to make an informed decision. And I think that we're at that point, and we'll be doing that in just a few weeks, I'm sure. But as a member of NLCOG, it was my responsibility to gather that information. We've been meeting, and we've had presentations from the engineering firm that's done the studies, and, you know, we're already, already at a point, I think, where we'll be able to make some decisions about the route. I did meet with the Lupid Group, I heard from them, and they, they talked to me about their concerns, and we've heard from many other citizens. But NLCOG will make that recommendation, and as a member of NLCOG, I did not want to circumvent that process either. So I feel like as a member of that group that will be making the recommendation, I needed to wait until I had all my information. So I wanted to, I want to thank you for allowing me to say that.
Mayor, and I thank you for saying that, because again, I think it shows the due diligence of this total body, as well as the administration, and that we was very careful in gathering information, that we will be in position to make a decision, an intelligent decision regarding what's in the interest of this city. So thank you, Mayor, for that.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Fleury, that we approve Resolution Number 10. You may vote. Motion passes 60-0, went out of the chamber. Thank you very much. Reports from, Mr. Crawford, we received our revenue collection report, paying electronic means?
Yes, sir, it was sent right after the first of the month when I received it from the tax commission.
Mr. Attorney Bradford, we received our security bond report. Thank you very much. Okay, we're ready now for additional public hearings. Is there anyone, and I don't have any slip, to speak on any item that are, that are on the agenda that wasn't Number 10?
I won't be able to hear until they quiet down.
All right.
Yeah, Mr. Bruce Sauer doesn't need to speak, so you can take him off.
He don't have an agenda item?
I haven't said anything.
Agenda item?
Yeah, he says he's not speaking today. You can take him off.
This is an agenda item?
No.
Soon enough, absolutely.
All these are not.
Rob is a non-agenda item.
All right, Deputy Clerk, can you hear us now?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. My question was, and I, I have some forms, but I want to be clear, that no one has an agenda item they would like to speak on at this time. There's none, okay. Thank you.
Are you, hey, Rob's raising his hand, but I thought he said he didn't have an agenda item.
Well, it was on the resolution, is that the same? Is this the appropriate time?
What resolution is that?
The MPC? Yes. It is the appropriate time.
These are agenda items commentary only, agenda item commentary only.
Yeah, it's on the agenda, you're, this is an opportune time to speak.
The rules, you just need to take that one.
No, no, no.
No, it's on there.
Let me see, let me see, let me see that.
It's on there. This is only case.
Wait.
It's, it's on the agenda, I can assure you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was thinking about another, Mr. Bruce Sauer, please step forward. This is ordinance 28 on the agenda. Okay, you, you, we welcome you to give your commentary.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bradford, President, Commissioner, City Council members, Mayor Tyler, before I get to the, the agenda item, I'd like to also report historically that what I'm about to talk about was also heard by Oliver Jenkins and the mayor, who was so gracious to come to our Broadmore Neighborhood Association meeting with a whole bunch of people that worked for the city, department heads, and we had a wonderful meeting. And we will also be having a meeting on the 22nd to hear from Dr. Lamar Gorey about our schools. The issue at hand, though, for me on the MPC, is a resolution that was put on and then removed, and my comments about that deal with the MPC. The Broadmore Neighborhood Association heard the Director of the MPC stand up in front of us and tell us if we needed a resolution passed, an emergency resolution could be introduced by council members, and that's all we need to do. Well, that resolution was made, and the rug got jerked out from under us, because now the MPC is telling us that it has to go before the MPC and be voted on before it can come back to this council. So this process that we're dealing with that concerns MPC was started back last August. And, you know, and I appreciate that y'all are elected officials, but you're elected for four years. It's been eight months. Eight months since this issue came up. Eight months we've said, please, we will work with you. Eight months we've said, what do we need to do? In January, in February, we were told over and over, introduce a resolution, pass it under emergency standards, and it can impact your neighborhood. Today, I find out, no, we've got to put it off some more. Now, the MPC chairman should have told us that six months ago, five months ago, four months ago, so that it could have been scheduled to go before the MPC board if indeed that was a process that was needed. To come to, come to get a phone call today to say that, I'm sorry, we can't do it today because the MPC has informed us we have to get the, the board approval, is absurd, that we are just now hearing that today.
Can I respond?
Yes, sir.
We are a city of laws, codes, and ordinances. It happens often, not often, it happens sometimes, it happens occasionally, where we would put the court before the voice. It has happened, it's happened with me, it's happened with other councilmembers. There's different criterias for different legislation. I'm not, I'm not sure what was the scenario around in this legislation, but I could tell you that I have offered legislations only for the clerk to tell me it has to go another route. That's not unusual. I don't know, I'm asking your councilman from that district. Councilman Jacobs, can you have any input on what happened here?
Well, and Mr. Bruce Sauer is correct, out of Broadmore Neighborhood Association, Mr. Sweeney did, did tell the citizens that they liked this proposed provision to the UDC, that all we would need to do was be to propose the ordinance at the next city council meeting, and it would lay over two weeks, and then we could vote on it. And in fairness to Mr. Sweeney, I'm not sure he, you know, intentionally misled them, okay? I think what we found out when yesterday, or, I mean, last week, when this ordinance, you know, when I proposed this ordinance as per the UDC as an interim stopgap until the UDC was formalized, I believe on Monday morning, Art, in consultation with Stephen Jean and Mr. Sweeney, realized that it would be appropriate for it to be sent to the MPC to be voted on. There wasn't enough time for Mr. Sweeney yesterday to put it on next week's MPC agenda, and as a result, could not be heard at the MPC until the April meeting, and then would not get on our agenda for formalized vote until our first meeting, and may I, if I'm not mistaken. So in lieu of the ordinance, which I am going to make a motion to remove it from the agenda, I am asking that we add legislation for a resolution to send to the MPC to say, please support this particular piece of legislation, which you will see at your next meeting. So that's essentially from the steps, as you can read in the resolution that's being offered, Resolution 50, clearly there's ordinance, there's reference to state ordinance, which essentially requires this procedure, and that's a procedure that we are following, you know, in accordance with state law.
And that's the, usually the misunderstanding, and I promise you, nothing was done intentionally to mislead your group or your community. Oftentimes, we don't sometimes catch the state component of our legislation. Ms. Sweeney is here. Ms. Sweeney, can you give any insight into this situation?
Please note, we ask, starting back last August, research, find out the facts, what do we need to do?
And, and again, there was a situation in my district, and I can ensure stuff, that they can move forward with construction of a facility, only to find out that we, it was state law that we could not circumvent the vote of the MPC to get that done, so they had to delay for three months. But nevertheless, I'm not, I'm just saying that happened.
Originally, though, we were told there was nothing we could do, and it was the BNA that kept, in consultation with an attorney, found out, yes, there is. It was us that had to discover the route.
Well, okay, Ms. Sweeney, just put some light on what happened here.
Well, one thing, just to make the record straight, when I make a presentation or I go to a meeting and people ask, can we do certain things, I give them the simplistic answer, you can go through the necessary process, of which you can have a council member or even a regular citizen can request an amendment to the zoning ordinance. But that process, which was not discussed in our meeting, is that you have to first start with the MPC board, and I have to advertise that at least 14 days in advance of the meeting. And my board has asked me, on any type of ordinance revision, that before I make a recommendation for an ordinance change, that I introduce the idea to them in a previous meeting. That's a policy that we established back this last year. So, basically, in my conversation with Councilman Jenkins was that I would introduce the idea at the March 16th meeting, and since I don't have enough time to advertise an ordinance amendment, that the soonest we could put it on the schedule for my board to vote on it would be April the 20th, and then it would be forwarded on to the city council. I actually, you know, the policy here is, the best thing to do is to approve the entire UDC, rather than peeling off section after section to do a standalone revision. But, having said that, I understand the importance of this because of the concern of new other types of group homes that might come into certain neighborhoods, or like the Broadmoor area, which I happen to live in that area, and I understand that there's kind of a window of opportunity. So, the idea here is, is that that's exactly what we're going to do, and what I just described to you, but I am held by state law to go through that process. And the last thing I want to say is, ladies and gentlemen, anytime you try to revise chapter 106, it is required by state law that it must come through the MPC first. And I just want to make that clear. And perhaps I should have said that at the Neighborhood Association meeting. I'm sorry I didn't, but that question was not asked that further on in terms of what other details are might be. So, anything that has to do with a revision requires a process of procedure by state law that I have to obey.
I understand. Mr. Bruce Sauer?
Rob looking at him like he's a little crap.
Oh, no, I don't say that. That's not, that's not a nice turn. Yes, sir.
Eight months. It could have been before the MPC board, eight months. We've been waiting for some movement on this, and to continue to wait is exactly where it's going to end up on the, we may end up voting on it at the UDC vote, when the whole UDC is adopted, versus having moved forward in an eight-month period. And go to-
Mr. Sauer, I apologize.
Thank you.
We all apologize. We won't drop the ball.
Thank you.
Your, your, Councilman Jenkins has just pledged that he's going to create legislation, that we can move it, we're going to ask that it be expedited, that it will get on the calendar in a timely manner, so that we can go ahead and bring this to closure.
And as you know, Mr. Bradford, we're willing to work with anybody. We'll meet you halfway. We appreciate all that the city council has done, and the mayor's office, especially the mayor's office, where people answer our questions, and we don't find ourselves having to go behind them and say, well, but what about this part? What about that part? What about this other part? Thank you, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, thank you.
Councilmember.
You're going to create the legislation that we need to move?
It's, oh, it's on there already.
Oh, that's not-
So, I had to, I'm removing one based on what transpired the last 24 hours, and I've added a new piece of legislation that needs to be added to the agenda to accommodate this particular issue that we are discussing right now.
All right. Any other comment? I'm going to, okay, that's the end of the public conference. Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's move forward with the regular agenda items.
Mr. Chairman, there are three items to be, that can be considered for adding to the agenda. One is ordinance number 29. It amends the 2016 downtown parking enterprise fund budget. Ordinance number 30 amends the 2016 general fund budget. These are companion budget items. And resolution number 50, which was just discussed, it's a resolution to initiate an amendment to chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, and chapter 106 is a zoning ordinance. So, this would be a change, to initiate a change to the zoning ordinance.
Is there anyone here who would oppose adding these items to the agenda? I still move that these items be added to the agenda.
Do we need to ask if there's anybody in support of it?
Well, I thought if there's nobody that was opposed. But if, are there anybody in support of it? Okay. It's just a procedural thing, you know, but I should have said support first, but if you're not opposed, I'm trusting that you ain't-
Who's second in motion, Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Emerson. Who's second that we, that these items would be added to the agenda? Any discussion? Please vote. That motion passes 7-0.
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Can we identify what the project is for the downtown parking enterprise fund? It says moving from $500,000 to $600,000 for a project, but I'm just curious to know what the project is, and I would ask yesterday, but it's new to me on the agenda.
I'll beat to that, let it matter.
Let me respond, and then I'll ask my CAO to-
Sure.
-take it back. You may recall last year that this way came to us to talk to us about the revitalization of the old petroleum, petroleum building, and we were in discussions with a person who, an investor who wanted to come into our city and create lofts there. And so, we at that time came to council with a piece of legislation that said to you all that we would be willing to sell the air rights to one of our parking-
That's correct, DSTC.
DSTC, right. And they did give us the $500,000, you know, and said to us, they'd like to use it, though, for this project with, you know, if we decided to actually do the contract with this investor, that would be additional parking downtown, and plus we'd have those lofts to be able to revitalize downtown, basically. And that's kind of the Reader's Digest version.
No, no, but that's the project that we're talking about, is the old petroleum town.
Right, right, and of course, we agreed to do $600,000 toward that loan, well, it's a loan, actually, to this investor, and there was discussion with parish commission, you may recall, that they were going to do $600,000, and I don't know what has happened to their $600,000, but we wanted to make good on ours, but we did put in place, and we have not done an agreement yet, but we're going to do the agreement, but we did talk with you about putting in place some benchmarks to ensure that, you know, that revitalization does occur. But we haven't done that yet, and I believe Attorney Bradford is going to be working on that. Do you want to come up and, why don't you?
Yeah, the initial, when the agreement, that'll be brought before the council to approve for the mayor's signature when that does occur. Councilman, Attorney Bradford can talk about the benchmarks that are in there for the repayment of the loan itself.
We are currently working on a loan agreement, promissory note, and other documents relative to this agreement. We're trying to make sure that as much security is invested into this process as possible. So, we have established a method of benchmarks that will be agreed upon by the investor, as well as with the city's report, in consideration for the terms of this loan. We want to do everything we can to protect the city's interest and make sure that the investor is afforded all opportunity to revitalize this particular building.
Okay, and like I said, I didn't want to make it sound like I'm against any of this. It just didn't list in there what the specific project was, so that was really, but that's good to know, and all we're doing is we're-
Transferring.
We're transferring an additional $100,000.
From the parking special revenue.
There's $500,000 that the council already appropriated last year from the DSTC funds that have been put into a general fund account. This is the other $100,000 coming from parking, being dedicated from the parking enterprise fund.
Parking enterprise fund.
And the other amendment is so we can receive it in the general fund and put into a contractual services account. We will eventually come back to the council and move that $500,000 to that same general fund contractual services account, so all 600 will be sitting in one place. We'll do that at the same time that the contract moves forward for the council's approval, so it'll all be done at one time.
And then the theory is that the hundred, some portion of this is going to parking as part of the overall project, right?
Correct.
There's the additional parking on the side of the building, or whatever that scope was. Okay, that's good enough. Thank you.
Oh, I was just going to mention, and I think CAO Crawford pointed it out pretty well there at the end of his statement, but we will, you know, this is to get the money in the account, in the appropriate account. There is additional legislation required before we loan this money out, so this is not the final act that we'd be allowing for that to move forward.
One of the puzzle pieces.
Just as a point of clarification, there are several pieces of legislation necessary to finalize this deal. This is just putting the money into one place so that we can move forward with the discussions on the rest of it.
Thank you. And thank you. First, let me thank Councilman Jenkins for at least, let's bring in some light on this, and thank you for your explanations and making us enlightened on how and what this is going to occur.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that. At this time, council members and to the mayor, I'm going to excuse myself, I have to go and take care of a little business regarding my family, and I appreciate your indulgence of my situation, and thank you for your thoughts and prayers.
And I will be back in just a minute. Council members and the mayor. Mr. Flory, vice chair, is going to continue from here.
We have no confirmations or appointments to be considered today. Let's continue the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, there are several items on the consent agenda, resolution 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 46, and 49, and a motion to adopt the consent agendas in order.
Move by the chairman. I mean, Councilman Emerson, second. By Councilman Jenkins. Okay, any discussion?
Just maybe we should rename the consent agenda to the chapter 10 agenda, because frankly, we may need to ultimately look at that chapter 10 if that's basically what we're doing every week, but.
Ingrid and I just had that conversation before.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Chairman, that's 6-0, one out of the chamber. We're now into resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 10 was adopted. Resolution 47 urges and requests the Louisiana Legislature to oppose any reduced funding relative to the university health, LSU Health, Shreveport School of Medicine, Southern University, Shreveport, and Louisiana State University at Shreveport.
Move second. Okay. Moved by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any discussion?
Chairman, I believe that's also 6-0 with one out of the chamber. There was one resolution that was added, number 50. It can be adopted at this time. It's a resolution to initiate an amendment to chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances.
Hold the vote.
Oliver, did I hear you move? I'll second that.
Are we, yes.
Resolution 50.
Sorry, yes, excuse me. I will make that motion.
I thought I heard you do that, okay. Any discussion?
Sorry.
Please vote. Sure, something taught me that, true.
I thought we were already on intro of resolutions, so I was expecting six of them, and I had them in a day, that's my question.
Okay, that's 6-0, one out of the chamber.
Chairman, we're now in introduction of resolutions. Resolution 42 authorizes the use of certain equipment by Shreveport Green for the Great American Cleanup. Resolution 43 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the Department of Air Force, Parkdale Air Force Base. Resolution 44 authorizes the use of certain equipment by the North Shreveport Business Association. Resolution 45, 44, I don't know what it's, but Resolution 45 authorizes the execution of a retainer agreement with Grigario, Chafin, and Johnson LLC, Joshua K. Williams, Attorney at Law LLC, and Curtis Joseph Jr., and otherwise provides with respect there to, those are all of the ones to be introduced.
Okay. Is there a motion to remove these?
Resolution 48.
48.
48 is to be, no, that's to be removed.
Okay, 48, resolution.
Okay. Still move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Jenkins, second by Councilman Bowman. Is there any discussion? Please vote. Okay, vote 6-0, one out of the chamber.
Mr. Chairman, we would ask that the council would remove resolution 48, and the clerk will make certain comments about it, announcements about it during the comment section.
Still move.
Second. Okay, moved by Councilman Jenkins, second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Please vote.
And that motion was to remove 48.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, chamber 6-0, one out of the chamber.
We're now, before we introduce the ordinances, Mr. Chairman, it would be a motion to remove ordinance number 28 would be in order.
So, move.
Okay. Second. I'll second it. Councilwoman Lynch, motion made, and Councilman Flory's second it. Any discussion? Please vote. That's to remove. Okay, 6-0, 6-0 on that vote.
Mr. Chairman, we're now in introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to March the 22nd. Ordinance 23 amends the 2016 budget for the general fund. This concerns the marshal's salary. Ordinance 24 amends the 2016 retained risk budget. This is to move money to a capital project. Ordinance number 25 amends the 2016 capital improvements budget. It's a companion to number 24. Ordinance 26 declares a citizen's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the community development civil rights museum project. Ordinance 27 declares a citizen's intention to acquire full ownership of certain adjudicated properties for the community developments heritage place project. There were two add-ons. Ordinance 29 amends the 2016 downtown parking enterprise fund budget, and ordinance 30 amends the 2016 general fund budget.
Can move for introduction. Second. Okay, motion moved by Councilman Corbin, and second by Councilman Emerson. Any discussion? Please vote. Okay, votes 6-0. Mr. Thompson?
We're now in ordinances on second reading and final passage. I believe that ordinance number seven is to be removed, is that right, Mr.?
Ordinance seven and ordinance number 22, Mr. Clerk.
Number seven, if we would move that.
So, move to remove seven and 22?
Seven and 22. Okay, motion by Councilman Emerson to remove seven, ordinance seven and 22, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any further discussion? Please vote. That vote is 6-0.
Ordinance number 13 amends the 2016 general fund budget. This concerns city courts, personnel, services, materials, and support.
Motion by Councilman Jenkins, second by Councilwoman Lynch. Is there any further discussion? Please vote. And that passes 6-0.
Ordinance 14A amends the 2016 capital improvements budget.
Okay, motion, second, Corbin. Motion by Councilman Emerson, and second by Councilman Corbin. Any further discussion? Okay, that passes 6-0.
Ordinance 15 amends the 2016 budget for the street special revenue fund. This transfers $6,750,000 to a place on a capital project.
Second.
So, moved by Councilman Emerson, second by Councilman Jenkins. Any further discussion? All right, that passes 6-0.
Ordinance 16 is a companion to 15. It amends the 2016 capital improvements budget.
Yeah, sorry.
Second.
Or second.
Mr. Chairman? Okay, a motion by Councilwoman Lynch, and second by Councilman Jenkins. Any further discussion? Please vote. Please vote. And that passes 6-0, Mr. Thompson.
Ordinance 21 is a companion to ordinance 14. It amends the 2016 budget funding contractual services provided by Sportrade by Metro Management Associates, Inc.
Motion has been made by Councilman Everson, and second by Councilman Jenkins. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, that passes 6-0.
Ordinance 27, 22 has been removed. Ordinance 17 is a zoning matter, C-108-15. It rezones property located on the east side of the Spring Street Service Road, 112 feet north of Yuri Drive, from B3 Community Business District to I1 Light Industry District with site plan and.
So move.
Second. Move by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Corbin. Is there any further discussion?
I would like to, if it's appropriate, just to ask NPC, I mean, I just, I haven't heard any opposition to this at all, you know, but I don't know that people are that familiar with it. It's off the, it's sort of on Yuri Drive, you'll see it from Yuri Drive, it's the Spring Street access road, and so I think it's a little difficult for people to understand where it is. So I just wanted to hear, was there any opposition, or were there any concerns expressed by anybody? Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thank goodness, 'cause I already voted on it.
There's still time, there's still time to change it, Oliver. You can, you can deep in your heart and see if you still feel the same way.
All right, the motion.
That guy has not been cast yet, so.
Just a little ribbon, keeping it light, you know, everyone, people.
Huh? Who was up?
Waiting for Ms. Lynch.
Okay.
Wake him up, huh? You gonna wake him up?
That passes 6-0.
Ordinance number 18 is a zoning matter, C-2-16. It rezones property located on the northwest corner of Forbing Road and East Fort Nor Lucas Road, from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to B2 Neighborhood Business.
So move.
With site plan and plan group, building group approval.
Motion by Councilman Flurry, second by Councilman Jenkins, is it, Corbin. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Ordinance 19 is a zoning matter, C-5-16. It rezones property located on the northeast corner of Hern Avenue and Quentin Street, 40 feet east of Hern Avenue, from B2 to R2.
So move. This, again, I haven't heard any opposition to this, but also it's a, it's a downzoning. I mean, you know, so that's, that's a good thing for the neighbors of the property, and if that's what the owners of the property are requesting.
Motion by Councilman Everson. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Councilman Corbin, seconds. Any further discussion? Please vote. And that passes 6-0.
Ordinance 20 is a zoning matter, C-9-16. It rezones property located on the east and west side of Sand Beach Boulevard, 950 feet south of East 70th Street, from B1 Buffer Business District and B3 Community Business District to R3 Urban Multifamily Residence District with site plan and disapproval.
So move.
Second. Motion by Councilman Everson, second by Councilman Corbin. Other way.
Motion by Corbin, second by Everson.
I'm sorry. No, no. That's exactly what I meant. Any further discussion? Please vote. That passes 6-0.
Chairman, those are all of the matters on the regular agenda, and I'm not aware of any ordinance or resolution to be pulled from the table legislation, tabled agenda.
Okay. There are no appeals today, right?
All of the appeals were handled yesterday that we had.
There's no zoning appeals. Any reports on officers, boards, or committees? Seeing that there's none, Mr. Thompson, could we have your clerk's report, even in the storm buzzers going off on here? We'll work through it.
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, this is an important notice this time.
Okay.
This is a notice that is, in accordance with RS 4219.1 enacted in 2013, the city council is requested to give two kinds of advance notice, 30 to 60 days before it calls an election to renew any tax. Two kinds of notices are a newspaper advertisement and an announcement at the public meeting, at a public meeting of the city council. This announcement is for the purpose of meeting the second requirement. The public is hereby notified that the city council of the city of Shreveport intends to adopt a resolution to call an election to authorize the renewal of the collection of the 1/4% sales and use tax of the city of Shreveport, of the fire and police departments of the city of Shreveport, and it's, the title is listed below, at its regular meeting, which will be held on Tuesday, April 12, 2016, beginning at 3:00 P.M. in the government chambers at Government Plaza, 505 Travis Street. Said resolution will also be discussed at this administrative conference on April 11, 2016, but no action will be taken at that meeting. The resolution is as follows. A resolution ordering and calling a special election in November of 2016 to be held in the city of Shreveport, state of Louisiana, to authorize the renewal and collection of the 1/4% sales and use tax therein, making application to the state bond commission in connection therewith, providing for other matters in connection therewith. So we withdrew the resolution from the agenda, but we're giving notice that it will be added at a later time and voted on by this.
Okay. All right, any communications from the mayor?
No. No. Thank you.
Any council members have any communication?
Of course.
Councilwoman Lynch, I recognize, Chair recognizes.
Yes, I want to thank everyone that was involved. The church, the lappidated structure that was at the corner of Broadway and Doris is down. I got a couple of calls about it. People were very appreciative that it, that it was finally down. I'll show y'all a picture of it later. The other thing I wanted to ask about, oh, make a statement about, rather, is Mr. Wood, Mike Wood, is he still here?
He's here for a minute.
Has assured me that, in the mayor's will, that we have a plan to address the grass situation this year.
Yes.
That it's not going to be a repeat of anything in the past, that we're on top of it. I was driving around today, and, you know, there's a lot of puffiness, I call it puffiness, you know, medians, look like they got little afros sitting on top of them, all over the ci, well, I don't say all over the city, in certain parts of the city. So I know it's supposed to be raining for like a week, from what I understand, but I'm hoping, you know, the grass needs to be cut really now, but I'm hoping that once the rain stops and it gets dry, that, you know, whatever our plan is, that we're, we're on it. I was on Pine's Road today, the median, you know, going down Pine's Road between Fort Nor Lucas and the interstate needs to be cut. I know that's not my district, but I was going to Walmart, and Walker Road between 70th and Burke Coons, of course Hollywood Avenue, you know, and just here and there and here and there. So I'm anxious and excited that we're gonna be on top of these, these and other areas. There are some dead trees along Hollywood, along the city property by Airport Park, that, that I hope we can address getting those up. And I want to say to my constituents that if you're living next door to a property where the grass is already growing, and I'm sure after this rain it's gonna be even higher, do not wait until that grass is up to your knees to call me or to call the mayor's office, you know, screaming and making a fuss. If that, when that grass hits your ankle, start calling, because it may take another two to three weeks before it's actually cut. And so if you call when it's up to your knee and it takes another two or three weeks, it may be up to your hip. And so let's just be, as a community, on top of that situation. The other thing, there's, people are still putting out brush. I'm not sure if they're calling it in, but that number, if you have tree limbs outside your home, then that number is 673-6300, is that right? Is it 673? That might be the police number. What's that number?
673-6300.
Okay, so that's right. Please call that in, don't let that brush sit out there. I don't know if we're still reviewing whether we're gonna go back to picking that up on our regular trash route, or if we're gonna continue with this program, boat program of people having to call in. Not sure how effective it's been, but it seems that folks are not calling it in, and it's sitting there for an inordinate amount of time. The other thing, and I'm just talking to my constituents, so y'all give me a little time. I got a call last week, I believe it was, at 3:02 in the morning, from one of my constituents that was a little upset about the Crenshaw Cruisin', I don't even know what they call it now, but that's what they used to call it, that's kind of cranked back up, you know, we haven't really had a winter, and so, you know, it's been nice out, and so people are out. So at, you know, 3:00 A.M., the police had already been called, had been out, run them off, they stay gone 25, 30 minutes, and then they come back. And so she called me to say if she was up, then she figured that I needed to be up. And I, you know, I was like, really? Okay. And, and she said that, I guess I probably, just a family show, I can't really say what she said yet, but the bottom line was, she said I needed to be up doing my such and such job and not just collecting the check.
Really?
And that I worked for her. Yada, yada, yada. So let me say, I was elected to represent the interests of the folks in District F, to represent, not work for, okay? I work with the community, I work with my constituents, I work on behalf of their interests, but I don't work for, I don't consider myself working for. Now, the people that are down here making 100, 150, 160,000 dollars a year, they work for you, okay? And so, I mean, I got up, I handled the situation, got the police department supervisor on the phone, the situation is gonna be addressed, we talked about, you know, some possible solutions to address it. And as anybody knows, if you contact me, I really don't care what time it is, I'll answer my phone. And I said that, you know, to this lady, I answered my phone, she said that she had been trying to reach me, but I told her I answered my phone at 2:00 in the day like I do at 3:00 in the morning. So I'm not hard to get in touch with. My number is 532-3326, but I am going to ask that people be respectful. You know, I don't work around the clock in this position. And we are going to address whatever concerns that you have, as you did in this case, but I just wanna make sure that we continue to work together. It's not one person trying to solve a problem of almost 30,000 people. We have to work together. So I just wanted to make those comments, but please, ma'am, sir, please start calling those residences in, and please start calling those brush pickups in, to 673-6300. Other complaints that you may have, I've given you my number, the mayor's number as well, is 673-5050. Some of these concerns that people have will have to be addressed at the executive level, and so we certainly, definitely want, you know, her to be aware, her administration to be aware of the concerns that you all may have, you know, in, in certain areas, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member to like to speak? Councilman Corbin?
Thank you, Councilman Flurry, just a couple of quick things. When I opened the Sunday paper, I found an ad in there that I think I was happy to see, and it's about blowing yard waste into the street. And I know that Councilman Monty Walford happens to be watching, that he would be glad to hear us discussing that. And there is a phone number to call on here, 673-6950, to report it. I know over my first term on the council, we've talked about this from time to time, and it always came back to, police could not do anything with this, and city courts would not take it. So has there been some movement, and can this now be considered an illegal act?
Good afternoon. How's the council? We have, that is our C.O.P. number, that has come up again this year, you know, with the warm weather, of course, the absence of winter that we had here in Shreveport. The grass is growing quickly, so we started getting phone calls, and we tried to funnel them all in one place, and that's what we're trying to do now. I mean, all of you know how responsive the CLOs are, and one of the problems we get in the past is somebody complains about yard waste being blown in the street, by the time an officer, patrol officer gets the call, he gets over there, they're gone, or they've blown it into a drain, it's not there anymore. So we're trying to be a little more proactive this year. If we know what's going on, we get the CLO out there, they can spend some time talking to the property owner, 'cause I do believe there's still a lot of people that don't know that's against the law, which is the reason for getting it out there and putting the number there, is to let people know that it does affect our drainage system in the city, and that we don't want them to do that. So we're gonna try and do the knock on the door one time, let you know it is illegal, don't do that again. If we come back, then we'll have to cite you.
Thank you.
The other thing I had is, and I meant to say this a couple meetings ago, over the Christmas holidays and Montegraw, and then some recent music events, I've had the opportunity to be both in the convention center and Municipal Auditorium. And I just want to compliment our SPAR employees for how good these facilities look, and our partners at S.M.G., how well things seem to be running at them. And it's first class all the way, and I just couldn't be more happy that we continue to have event after event at Municipal Auditorium. I think that shows that our investment there certainly paid off. All I got.
Okay. We're gonna recognize the speakers, and I must remind you, you'll have three minutes. Mr. Charles Williamson. Boy Scout Troop 10.
Wanted to take a quick minute. My name's Charles Williamson, 8621 St. Almette Drive, Shreveport. To plug my Boy Scout Troop, you know, most of y'all are familiar with me. My Boy Scout Troop's been in existence for 25 years. On the Saturday, March 19th, we're having a fundraiser. It'll be at Parkco Shopping Center, between podders, reporters, cleaners. We're selling chicken dinners, $6, will get you a half a charbroiled chicken, beans, slice of bread, and a bag of potato chips. This is what we do to raise money, to pay for. This is what we do to raise money, to pay for equipment, campsite fees, gas, to get places and stuff for our troop. So I'm asking y'all if y'all will be out, come swing by and buy a dinner and take it home. We also, I wanted to plug, you know, we do the scouting for food drive. Last October, our troop by itself picked up ninety-two hundred pounds of canned and dry goods, which was more than the entire council picked up. We, we filled four pantries.
Wow. That's great.
What time at Podders?
Ten o'clock. You can start picking up dinners at ten o'clock, all the way to five o'clock. Portico Shopping Center on Saturday, March nineteenth.
Also sent some of your troop that was here earlier?
No, they're, they belong with another troop, but they were here for their community, uh, communications badge is what they were.
Yes, they have a little write-up for our, uh, the little something.
I saw that too. I got a request as well.
Well, then, you only do one.
He can't write both letters, can he?
Always try to.
Can we not just do a joint letter?
Always try to promote my troops and everything. We, we do a lot of stuff for, for our community and our area. We actually, uh, two or three times a year, we'll pick up all the way from Uri Drive all the way to L.L.A. Road on both sides of the highway.
Well, I'm glad you took a minute to do that. I think, um, scouting is something that, um, you know, is a really great, uh, really great, um, pursuit and activity for, for young people to be involved in. And I think in today's day and age where you got year-round soccer and year-round this and that, it's probably a little harder to, to get the kids to make, I mean, there's more competition for kids' time, you know? Um, but scouting is something where you really learn a lot of skills that you use throughout the rest of your entire life and, uh, you know, really creates good character.
On camping trips and some of the places we've been, they would never get a chance to see, visit otherwise.
Yeah, changes their perspective. And then just some of the things like we see, you know, when people come in here for their communications badge, but, you know, there's other things that kind of push somebody out of their regular interest or regular comfort zone and to learn something that they may otherwise not expose themselves to. That's great when you're young. I mean, because the older we get, the more people just fall into their ruts of what they see and know every day, and, you know, the more you can broaden your perspective as a young person, um, the better you can move between situations as an adult, so.
Anyway, that's, I just wanted to give them a good plug and hopefully drum up some more business for the troop. So, hope to see y'all in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the chair at this time would like to recognize Mr. Henry Wesley, uh, Director of Parks and Recreation for the parish. Mr. Wesley, would you please stand? We're so glad you're here. Thank you. Okay. Uh, Chair recognizes Mr. Stanley Lester. Mr. Lester, are you here? Okay, come forward and give us your name and address, and you have three minutes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. Since we only have three minutes, I'm not gonna take up a whole lot of time. But my name is Greg Johnson. I'm, I'd like to say hi to council, as well as the mayor and the rest of the staff. Uh, my office represents Mr. Lester, as well as the Friends of the Fairgrounds Field. And, uh, I've talked with Mr. Lester on several occasions regarding this proposal, and I think it's the kind of proposal that would be good for the city because I've lived in a few cities in my life, and what makes a city great is the daytime activities. And revitalizing that Fairgrounds Field would improve the daytime activities for the cities and probably would attract people or keep people interested and staying in the city. That being said, I'll turn the floor over to Mr. Lester.
Good, um, good evening. I'm Stanley Lester, two-two-eight Spring Street, uh, Shreveport, Louisiana. Um, I'm here out of concern for Fairgrounds Field. I'm speaking to you because the field has just been abandoned. It was once the home of baseball champions, but now it's a haven for bats and other rodents. With the current deterioration, break-ins, deferred maintenance, graffiti along numerous walls, the lack of use could bring this asset dangerously close to slum and blight. With the stadium being located right off of Interstate Twenty with easy access and high visibility as you enter the city, it's too important to the projected character of Shreveport to continue to ignore. The general appearance of this stadium is in complete conflict with the city's keep it classy, not trashy campaign. We can no longer afford to kick the proverbial can down the road because, as a city, we have allowed an essential recreational asset to become an eyesore. I'm aware that the city of Shreveport has been looking for a solution to the multitude of problems that plague this particular facility. Uh, since opening in nineteen eighty-six, Fairgrounds Field has only been in use for eleven years, which represents, um, less than forty percent of its thirty-year history. Within five years of the stadium's three-point-five million-dollar construction, the facility was obsolete and no longer ADA compliant. In spite of the stadium being included in the two thousand and eleven bond issued for three hundred thousand dollars of accessibility upgrades, the improvements have been placed on hold. The stadium has been completely vacant for the last five years and it's costing the city money. As I understand it, there are currently no plans to demolish, restore, or sell this facility, and in its current condition, private industry would typically not be interested in taking over a project like this. I have an experienced group called Friends of Fairgrounds Field that is interested in partnering with the city of Shreveport in an effort to rebrand this facility and make it a useful contribution to the quality of life for our local citizens until such time that we can find or attract a sports franchise that would be interested in making Fairgrounds Field their new home. Members of our group bring a cadre of experience and qualifications to the table. They have all operated small businesses. Some of our business highlights include, but are not limited to the following: operated forty-five apartment complexes in seven states, seventy combined years of managing commercial real estate, founding director, organizer for the Let the Good Times Road Festival, major concert promotions for national artists in five states.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
Who takes stand?
Okay.
For another, uh, three minutes.
Thank you. All, uh, any opposed to that? Okay, so you've got three additional minutes.
Thank you. Uh, twenty-five of years of experience in transportation logistics, eight years experience in catering, vending, managed numerous entertainment venues, managed food and beverage services for the following, including Shreveport Regional Airport, General Motors, Libby Glass, Odessa Auto Auctions, Southern University, Independent Stadium, and et cetera. Managed food service and vending for Metro Property Managers and ten assisted living complexes for the elderly and handicapped. Bat extermination, continued non-use and neglect of this multimillion-dollar facility has contributed to the bat infestation. This facility will not be able to reasonably function unless the bats are removed. Through research, we have found a possible solution that we believe will be most cost-effective, the, the most cost-effective way to eradicate the bat problem. We discovered that Wrigley Field had the same problems at one time, and they opted to use an electronic bat removal syst, system as a safe extermination alternative. We are proposing that the city of Shreveport do the same. It's very cost-effective, not expensive at all. Um, we believe the bat problem can be eradicated, Fairgrounds Field cleaned up, and put back into service for approximately seventy-five thousand dollars, which would include, uh, the cost of the equipment, um, installation, cleanup, lawn service, landscaping, and contingencies. Uh, we are proposing a public-private partnership. As we understand it, the current cost of maintaining Fairgrounds Field is approximately two hundred thousand dollars, which will probably be reasonable once the facility is put back online. Our overall objective is to do our part to improve the quality of life for the citizens of our city. In our proposed partnership, we would like the city of Shreveport to continue to cover the cost of reasonable operations, maintenance support at the current budget amount of two hundred thousand dollars plus the initial seventy-five thousand projected cleanup budget. We will be responsible for the cost of economic development. The general cost overview and/or associated expenses would be to the city for SPAR services, maintenance, uh, supplies as needed, utilities, and extermination costs. Friends of Fairgrounds Field are interested in marketing the facility for available use, market the stadium, uh, for naming rights, provide the necessary funding for operations and modest upgrade, establish website for the venue, promote athletic events, trade shows, festivals, carnivals, uh, self-promote, uh, special events and outdoor concerts, uh, market to area promoters as an affordable option.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Can I, let, may I request to ask a question just so that I think, if you propose this to the city, I mean, really, the city council forum is not really the normal forum for a, I'll call it a pitch, in lieu of anything else. And are you doing this because they didn't necessarily support it, or is this the first time anybody here?
I am, I am not. It, it came to me, um, by way of my father who passed by and said that stadium looks horrible. You need to come up with something to do with it. So as a result of that, I did that forum a couple of weeks ago, and, uh,
You presented it to the?
I, I just forwarded the email to the mayor's office yesterday.
Honestly, I haven't seen it.
Okay, so I'm just saying that this isn't really, this is not the forum, she has the executive authority, we're a legislative body, and I, I mean, does it sound good to me? I'm sure it sounds good to everybody up here, but I, I'm not sure this is the right place to process a business model for the city of Shreveport.
I understand. Uh, but this was the easiest way to get to the mayor. I'm not sure what her schedule looks like.
I don't think that's fair, because she is very, she is very accessible.
I know she is, but this was the quickest way we could get to her and you all, because without your support, you could kill it too.
Well, you've, yeah. We're just saying it's, it's, it's just an unusual starting point, but I mean, that's not to say it's not interesting to hear, it certainly is, but, um, I think, uh,
You know, we'll be glad to, I did not, I mean,
I know.
You know.
And I can, and I can understand certainly the, the,
Find out what your direction is. If so, put it out.
And I'll, I'll say just briefly, I don't want to speak for the administration, and I'm sure they'll, they'll be willing to talk with y'all after the meeting, but,
Absolutely, absolutely.
It's my understanding, and I think from a recent Shreveport Times article or something that I read, that they actually are trying to negotiate a situation on the, on the ballpark there.
But I didn't know about this one.
And certainly, it's great to know that we have some caring community partners with that great experience that y'all have listed off that are, that prioritize this, 'cause we need people in the community to kind of come together.
Sure does, yeah.
You know, it's a, it is, it's, we have a, we have a lot of facilities that we manage, we have a lot of, um, you know, uh, we have an aging infrastructure, we have a, you know, we have a lot of difficulty that we are trying to balance and, um, you know, trying, trying to put, uh, do attention on everything. Um, and having the help of citizens who care and take the time to put together a great presentation like this is a fantastic asset for us. So we certainly appreciate y'all coming down and, and I, like I say, I don't want to speak for them, but I'm pretty sure they'd be happy to talk with you a little bit more a, after this. Um,
Thank you. I mean, if you will just call my office, 'cause actually, this is my first time to hear about it. Uh, if you sent it yesterday,
Yeah, we just sent it.
I'm pretty sure I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I will. And if you will, uh, call, we'll set up some time for you to come by and talk to us. And, 'cause as I was reading, uh, the information is really interesting, because there is some data that's not accurate on those prices. So we can talk about that, though. But just let me know, because we, we, you know, we will make, uh, every effort to work with, and we do that. I'm very accessible, all you gotta do is call me.
That's fine. We'll, we'll be glad to do that.
Thank you very much.
We'll set something up as soon as possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Uh, Chair now recognizes Mr. Brady Harris.
He's, he was with, uh, I, forty-nine.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Chair recognizes Mr. Luther Cox, Jr. Mr. Cox, come and state your name, please, and, uh, address, and also note you have three minutes.
My name is Luther Cox, Jr. I live at five twelve Wall Street, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven one one oh one. I have some handouts.
That's okay.
Again, to the mayor and the city council, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to, uh, try to see if I can get some information back concerning the dollar program. Inter-City Road Modern Dance Company applied, applied for a piece of adjudicated property back in twenty thirteen. We went through the whole year of cutting the lot, we went through the process of getting the neighbors to notarize the information that is, uh, contained in the document from the city, uh, from that department, and we again cut the lot in twenty fifteen. Uh, that's two years. Now we're up on, coming up on the third year of cutting the lot, and all I hear from Teresa is that we are working on it. Now, I know in the, in the proposal, it, it, it says after a year, you know, and I'm saying, well, I understand that after a year and after the, uh, necessary paperwork have been turned in, then you can purchase the adjudicated property for a dollar. But every time I go, it seems like the two of us have a communication problem. Even, either I'm not speaking plainly enough for her to understand me, or she's not speaking plainly enough for me to understand her. And I, I need to know, uh, one of her comments was, well, you can let it drop and then start all over again. And I'm like, I'm not finna drop a piece of property after three years of cutting it. So I figure if I have to cut it for twenty sixteen, then I'm saving the city money, because it takes at least two hundred and fifty dollars to cut that lot. And you could, have to cut it twice a month. And so I'm saying, well, uh, I think if I have to cut it for the third year, I need to start being paid. You know, if I can't buy it, you know, under the dollar program or something needs to be said. I haven't, uh, really talked to my councilmen. I have the privilege of having two councilmen, because my dance company is located in District A and I live in District B. And I haven't, uh, really, uh, sat down and talked, uh, to my councilman, uh, Ephrison, uh, but I did lay this out for you so you all can see. At the end of, of, starting in August, uh, actually October, there's no need to cut the lot between October and December, because the, the grass stops growing. And so, but this is my third year of trying to, uh, purchase that property.
Luther, I'll be happy to help you follow up on that. And mayor, if y'all don't mind, if we can,
You'll just stay after the council meeting, we'll put you in trouble.
Yeah, if we can get with Malcolm and see if we can figure out what's going wrong there, 'cause,
Right. And, and always call us, you can call my office directly if you're having a problem.
Okay.
And because, you know, a lot of times, we don't know.
I mean, I thought it was just going to be taken care of because of time.
Yeah.
But I didn't, I didn't think it was going to be.
Always call my office.
It sounds like you, uh, it sounds like,
Always respond whenever people call me.
Yeah. It sounds like you've got, uh, it sounds like you've got, you know, deadlines that were anticipated that you've met, and you, and then you're not getting a response that you expected after that. Um, the mayor's office is very accessible, you know, I'm happy to help as well. So whoever, uh, you want to reach out to, we'll follow up with you and make sure that we figure out what's going on here, 'cause certainly I think the dollar program's one where you've already saved us a lot of money. We'd love to get that property back on, you know, on, in active use again and actively owned, so, um, we'll be happy to help follow up.
We'll, we'll work with you.
And also, uh, just a little plug, since everybody is plugging, we did send you all the email to attend our Black Dancers and Choreographers Conference. It's a regional conference. It brings in dance studios from all over the state of Louisiana. Uh, so, you know, uh, we want the mayor to come and, and welcome everybody. It's, it's a collaboration between South Louisiana and North Louisiana. So bring your sweatpants, bring your t-shirts, and take a class. We do give you breakfast, a full breakfast, and we give you a full lunch, a balanced lunch. No sack lunches, it's a hot meal, a vegetable, a meat, and a starch.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the good work.
And Luther, now you've also been very involved in the As Is Project, uh, with Nick Cave's As Is performance.
Uh, yes, I am the choreographer for the As Is Project with international artist Nick Cave. And they, I don't have gray, well, I have some gray hair, but, uh, it's a really exciting program, and he's a wonderful artist to work with. And I've worked with Shreveport Regional Arts Council every since they have been here, starting in nineteen seventy-five, and now is twenty sixteen. So I am grateful to them and to Nick Cave for selecting me as the choreographer.
Well, I have to share some, uh, you know, I've had the chance to meet, uh, Well, I have to share some, uh, you know, I've had the chance to meet, uh, Mr. Cave a number of times, and he's a, you know, he's a very, very famous artist, um, very well-respected in, in many, um, parts of the world. And, uh, and he was so impressed with Shreveport talent.
Yes.
I mean, he was going on and on about some of the people he's met, and he, he singled you out in that, uh, discussion, uh, to talk about just how amazing you are.
Thank you.
And, uh, so, you know, it, I think, um, not only does he come and bring expertise and bring a critical eye to Shreveport and make some people pay attention to us that wouldn't typically pay attention to us. Um, not only does he also help to express voices of people who may not always have the ability or means to express their voices in, in the medium that he does. Um, you know, so he's done a lot of wonderful things, but also it's that confidence and validation that comes with having somebody who's made it on an international scale.
Oh, yeah.
Come here and look at the talent here and say, "This is exceptional." And so, um, you know, it's really been a wonderful thing, and I encourage everybody to come out on, uh, March 20th.
March the 20th.
March 20th, uh, Municipal Auditorium for As Is. Um, and, uh, tickets are available on Ticketmaster.com or at the Municipal Auditorium website, so everybody check it out.
Yes, it is. And I forgot to tell you, the location of the conference is at historic Bogota, Washington High School where your mayor taught me in the 12th grade.
All right.
Wow.
Now, our next speaker comes to us from live from the Grand Old Opry. Mr. Sammy Mears says here he sang a solo at his church.
Well, Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, Shreveport, 71101. Actually, what happened was on Valentine's Day, Miles Roberts, our music director, and Colby and, um, Mark were the only three in our band. Others were out and there was no soloist, so I helped Miles with the music where I made the copies of the 40 prints out and then pass them out to the band members. So we only had three of them, and Miles wanted to know, would I like to step forward and do a couple of songs to start the service off? And I said, "Yes." So I sang Heaven Came Down and How Firm a Foundation. Unbeknownst to me, just until last week, Brenton Ryder surprised me with a couple of CDs, and I would have brought them with me except that one of our tenants over at Oak Metals was so stupid last week that I apparently forgot to bring them today, but I would like to bring them the next time around. But this is really something I'd like to do, which is singing, like, in the past, I sang over at Jacob's Well when that Christian Coffee House was open, and sang over at First Baptist Shreveport with Kyle Kelly and his group. At First Baptist Shreveport was around the table, Carol singing, and when Darryl Prater was music director, sang with him in the Frost Chapel about three times and got to sing a little solo there. And on Grimmet Drive, and then of course, it'll be 14 years over at Noel Methodist Church this coming Easter on March 19th as well. That'll be from 11 a.m. to 1 p.m. when they have their Easter celebration meal. It'll be barbecue chicken. But this will be 14 years, and I'd just love to do that, and I wish that I would have had the CDs with me. I'll bring them, hopefully, next time I get a chance to, and you'll get to see them. I'm just surprised there's no CD here. But anyway, that, that was something that really meant a lot to me. I just couldn't wait to say something about that.
Well, that's great. We, uh, look forward to hearing a copy of that CD. That'll be fun.
Well, if you bring a CD player up here, maybe you will.
Well, we'll have to keep it in mind. We'll have to keep it in mind.
I'm sure you will.
We certainly wouldn't want to do it when the chairman wasn't here because if he missed it, you know, that would be mad at us.
He'd be mad.
Turn the church into a lovely toad and get it over with.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, the, I didn't recognize, I forgot, uh, Councilwoman Lynch, I overlooked you there.
Oh, no, you didn't. I just wanted to, wanted to piggyback on what, um, Councilman Everson was saying about the Nick Cave As Is Experience, and I made some comments about this on my, uh, Facebook page because I am so extremely proud of the, um, success of that project. I mean, I have seen, you know, just looking at the pictures and a lot of other, uh, information on it, uh, that the community has just received this project really well. And you're seeing, you know, people from all walks of life engaged together, uh, with this project, and, and I want to, you know, just publicly say thank you to Pam Atchison and to Sandy Kalenberg and each and, every person that has had a part in this project. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, I didn't know, I don't know how I missed that, but I didn't know that you were the choreographer, Luther, and, you know, just watching your group over the years at the Christmas in the Sky and, you know, other events that you've done, uh, is certainly a, a position that you have earned. Uh, and, you know, just to continue to respect and for the work that you've been doing for decades, uh, in this community and to see that, as you said, being recognized from an international artist is just vindication of, you know, a lot of the good things that the arts community brings to our city and the quality of the arts community. So thank you for, you know, hanging in there over all of these decades, you and, um, Gloria Gibson and just so many other people, uh, that are engaged in the arts, so thank you.
Okay. Councilman Jenkins, I overlooked you too on the board, speaker board.
Oh, no, no, that was, that was...
Okay, then Mr. Craft, Kenneth J. Craft.
Take us on home.
That's the wrap. Kenneth Craft, 157 Archer Avenue, 71105. Madam Mayor, Mr. Acting Chairman, don't forget your extra pay. Uh, just ask these three, Al and Sammy and Ken. And thank Oliver for the shout on math counts and Mayor, uh, our youngest son Joey was LES Executive, uh, Chapter President before he moved to Lafayette, and, uh, and I did get the 55 pizzas for the kids. They were glad to see me. Uh, infrastructure is the topic for the day. Coincidentally, it's the 33rd anniversary of Mayor Hussey cutting the ribbon on the Jewella Overpass, 78 C-016, for those of you who remember. And now it's 33 years old, and I'm hoping that in the strategic plan the mayor presents and the Infrastructure Committee, and the said members are here, C, E and D, uh, but if you add the chairman, it's ACED. And the Infrastructure Committee, I understand, is meeting probably, what, Monday, the 11th of April? And so let's, let's start looking at the Citizens Committee. A year ago, I said it would be time in '16, and we're in '16, and, uh, six years ago, we were already into four subgroups, and we were already planning the eventual, uh, April 11 election. By the time this group gets going and gets everything done, it'll be '17. It'll be next year. And that's, that's about the Shreveport path for... Where's my time? Because I'm curious. I'm not gonna go three minutes, but I'd like to know where I stand, but, uh, about six years, eight, eight bond issues in, in 48 years, it's about every six years. Well, one of which was a convention center, so you kind of, but we have a lot of needs, folks, and it's hard to get y'all to all agree. I don't have that much left. And, and it, it's kind of a reminder of what Congressman James Madison said at the first Congress in July of 1789 in a private letter to George Washington. He was trying to get the Bill of Rights through Congress, and he said, "The difficulty of uniting the men, minds of men accustomed to think and act differently can only be conceived by those who have witnessed it." So let's conceive a way to unite our minds and get together and do whatever amount of that 1.5 billion. We all recognize the need is there. It is huge. It is not gonna help us any longer to kick that proverbial rusty can down the road. When the mayor spoke and answered to our question at the BNA Forum for Mayor, which was September 23rd of '14, a Tuesday night, she said at the appropriate time, she would appoint a Citizens Committee to study for the next bond issue. I, I suggest, Madam Mayor, now is the appropriate time to do that and take you at your word. And, and thanks again for, and I, and I hope the final thing I could say is sometimes I like going before Sammy because he is a difficult act to follow.
We will take it under advisement.
Thank you so much.
And no objection, we adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor.
I was just gonna say, um, Mr. Craft, I, I do need to say this publicly. I, uh, I am going to convene that committee, but I don't think that's the right time. We got budget problems, the law down in Baton Rouge, and they're gonna dominate on us.
Oh, they're, we're gonna feel that.
Nobody's ready to do a, a bond proposition, so give it a little more time.
Maybe a year from now.
Thank you, sir.
I was gonna say, this is not a good time.